This is how I feel, I'm all done. Done. Seventy-eight more days, done.
Really?
Really.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call all of them in prison. Item number four.
The Democrat, she likes that one, so...
I'll make a motion to recess the question at meeting and open the salary board.
Second.
My question to Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item four. Recess at the commission meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 23rd, salary board.
Second.
Motion by Treasurer Evan, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item three, the approval of minutes of the September 23rd meeting. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
We already did that.
No, we're not.
I'm sorry, I'm salary board. I'll second that, sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item four on the agenda, to create the non-union full-time temporary assistant district attorney position with DA's office beginning November 15th and ending December 31st, 2015, for $4,000 per month. Questions, comments? Yes?
Is this a new position or is this replacing somebody?
This is a new position.
So how many assistant district attorneys do we have now?
What?
How many assistants do we have now for district?
There will be two until the end of the year.
Wait, 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 I got a question. When does he actually take office?
January 4th, is it?
That's what I thought, so do...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We don't want a layup. So we want it to be the 31st or do we want it to be January 4th? I don't know how the calendar works.
What is the first Monday? Is it the first?
There's a weekend in there, isn't there?
Yeah, there's a weekend.
I don't know how the days work. I don't want a layups.
The fourth, Monday is the fourth.
Yeah, I thought it was the fourth.
Monday is the fourth?
Monday is the fourth.
We don't want a layups, I think it should be...
No, we close the first and probably the second, so...
I say the fourth. I want to amend the motion to say January 4th. Midnight.
January 3rd.
Sunday night.
It'll be sworn in on the fourth.
Okay, let's say January 3rd, midnight. Does that make sense? That fixes it?
To be 2016.
Okay, motion has been amended to change the ending date to January 3rd at midnight. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any public comments, salary board?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to adjourn the commission meeting, or the salary board, and return the commission, is all in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Thank you.
Number five for you, Democrat.
I think we have a correction. I'm just trying to... The motion to approve the minutes is September 9. Commissioner Warren made it, Commissioner Warren seconded it, and second by Jean Greco. Is that... Or am I reading it wrong? Then there's a motion by Commissioner Jean Greco.
That's what it was, but this is what the correction was doing.
But we still have two seconds, is that...
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren.
What am I on, I'm sure?
You can approve what's up in our memo.
Now, we went through these things like a half a dozen times before we put them on the agenda to approve.
Say something, you got a problem?
So what are we doing?
I'll say, and we'll approve items listed on the person.
Second.
I have a question about that. We weren't able to make it to that meeting and nobody was dismissed, nobody was hired. Usually some people have left a job, some people have been put in a job.
Yeah, that meeting was very short, meaning it wasn't anything hardly on the agenda at all.
Okay.
We definitely had... We had the minutes and they're not approved and then I don't know what the correction is. It doesn't have anything to do with the minutes.
I can't fix it right this minute, but we can fix it and then ratify it at the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item six on the agenda, ratifying the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item seven on the agenda, ratify or approve the seven hundred plus in the payments. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item eight on the agenda, accept the resignation with regret for retirement, competitive roles. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item nine on the agenda, ratifying, accept with regret, the resignation, judicial bail, and sheriff's. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 10 on the agenda, accept with regret, the resignation of Ms. Cheyenne Daniels from the maintenance department, with regret. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 11 as listed on your agenda with the correction of January 3rd, 2016, midnight, for the ending day?
Yeah, you know, I just thought of something else, as I'm reading this motion, it says $4,000 per month. I assume it's going to be prorated. So for the 15th, that would be $2,000, not four for November. So let's make that clear that it's prorated. Let's add the word prorated in there. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Now I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item 11 on the agenda, now signing Robert Plaim with the non-union full-time temporary assistant district attorney position, ending on January 3rd, 2016, and prorated at $4,000 per month. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 12 on the agenda, ratifying the hiring of Jessica Mattis-O'Montrose to the full-time 911 telecommunicator dispatch training. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 as listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item 13 on the agenda, ratifying the hiring of Matthew Higgins, the fifth of Windsor, New York, to the full-time 911 telecommunicator dispatch training position. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
14?
14.
Motion to approve item number 14 is listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 14 on the agenda, accept the resignation of Brody Webster from the Suscan County Conservation District, effective September 21st, 2015. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on the agenda?
Did you say 15?
15.
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item 15 on the agenda, authorize commission to sign purchase service agreement between Suscan County Services for Children, Youth, and Kids Peace National Centers from July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 16 is listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 16 on the agenda, authorize commissioners to sign the Child Accounting and Profile System, version of an upgrade between Suscan County Services for Children, Youth, and Evangeline Government, and a cost of $608. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 as listed on your agenda?
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item 17 on the agenda, to exonerate the Tax Line Bureau from collecting income taxes for the recommendation Kathy Rattick on a property in Bridgewater. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 18 is listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 18 on the agenda, to sign the Creative Information Information System, 2016 Service Agreement. This is for the technical support for the scale of the recycling center, cost of $597. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 as listed on your agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve item 19 on the agenda, sign the Thompson-Johnson, 2016 Preventive Maintenance Agreement. This agreement is for the Toyota forklift to clamp truck, cost of $242 for the year. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Hello?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 20 if I have questions.
I'm not going to second it. I'm not sure it's legal. Thought somebody would have figured this out before it ended up on the agenda. We're going to pay for service providers for... I don't think so.
Well, what this is, is area agency on aging has not received any state funding and they are not paying the service providers, which are providing services to the elderly in Suscan County. And without receiving some funding, they will not be allowed to continue services to the elderly in Suscan County.
I'm not trying to hurt the elderly, but I'm going to tell you, I do not believe it is legal, under the county code, for us to pay for some other agency's providers. If you're going to try and help the area of aging, I believe the proper process would be to make a donation, and I'm not sure we can call it a donation, but for lack of a better term, assist the area of aging and then they in turn...
And that's what this is supposed to say.
Well, that is a hard sentence, and we're skipping a very important legal point on skipping over the area agencies and paying for their providers, which I don't think we can legally do.
Right. This is not to pay the service providers. Area Agency on Aging will pay the service providers.
That isn't what this is.
I have a question, it's okay.
So that needs to be changed to say...
So what do we got?
Helping them out until we get, until they get state money to provide for our own...
So we're just assisting the area agency on aging? Is it a loan?
Yeah, that's a question.
Yes.
Yeah, it's going to kind of be like a loan, but I, my other suggestion is going to be, before we confirm this, look, I'm in favor of helping them out. I just want to make sure it's done the correct way. And as I sit here, I'm not sure until I revisit the law as to what the proper protocol would be to get this accomplished.
Okay, right now I'm going to withdraw my motion that's on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to assist the area agency on aging per the review of our solicitor of what we have.
We just want to make sure we're doing it legally so that they don't have a problem and neither do we.
Per the review of the solicitor?
And I don't think we should wait two weeks to figure it out, to revisit it at another meeting.
So we second that motion?
I don't want to second a motion that I'm not sure is properly working.
It'll be approved conditionally, but won't it?
What's that?
Isn't that the idea, that upon approval from your solicitor, then it would be approved so that we don't have to wait two weeks?
No, we're not going to wait two weeks. Just sitting here trying to think of how to... Let's table this for now, revisit it before we adjourn. No, revisit it before we adjourn today.
Skip over 20 at this time.
Can I have a, can I make a comment? I was trying to understand this. So they haven't been paid for July and August?
Right.
At this point, and it's around $55,000 or $50,000? Now, what about September?
They haven't been paid for that either.
Haven't been paid for September, now we're into October.
Right.
And that's because there's no budget in the state?
Right.
Hasn't been approved?
Right. So all the people that are getting home meals or personal care at home, the elderly, are in jeopardy of losing all that care.
And it's the state's obligation to do this, so by the state down there not getting, doing their job, it's falling back on the local taxpayers to fund it, which I don't agree with. We elect them to office to get this stuff done. They're all getting paid. Every legislature down there is getting paid. And these people are going without assistance, or something wrong with that picture?
Yes, so then why don't they not pay the legislators too for the same months?
Well, why don't you ask them that? That's a million dollar question, probably more than a million dollar question. You don't think Harrisburg is upside down with Washington, there's something wrong. Now, the local taxpayers are funding this. We should not have to do that.
Now, is this the first time?
All of it's a worthy cause.
And is this the first time this has happened, that we can remember?
Yeah, it may have happened.
It was back in the Randell administration, it happened then too.
No, he blamed the Democrats, that's why it's not getting much.
I knew you had a comment or question.
The comment is that the taxpayers are already paying for the services by sending and remitting tax monies to Harrisburg, and these clowns are sitting there thinking that they can just play brinksmanship, and they're doing it.
Absolutely. 21.
Motion to approve item number 21.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to appoint Paul Johnson to make coordinator as the Weather Ready Nation Ambassador for Suscan County. Questions, comments?
Could you define this, please?
Yeah, it's, uh... Yeah, basically what it is, it's working with the National Weather Service and trying to be, you know, storm ready, to make sure that we have all the technology in place and making sure we have a relationship with the National Weather Service to make sure that all the information coming out through, so we can be ready for any type of disaster.
Do we have a relationship now?
Not like this.
So now that we have an official ambassador, things, the weather will get better, or... It's going to get much better this weekend, but, yeah.
The county was declared storm ready, was it?
We are storm ready.
Storm ready certification back in 2016.
Right, this is just another step in the process. No cost to us, so we have to come.
Now, does he have to travel somewhere since he's an ambassador? Does he have to go somewhere beyond our county?
As far as my knowledge at this time, no, everything he does is right here through the county. And everything we do on the National Weather is out of Bennington.
And he doesn't even have to learn another language.
Right. 21, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 23 is listed on the agenda?
22, second one?
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, to approve item 22 on the agenda, adopt resolution 2015-20 for a community block grant. Questions, comments?
What is this block grant? Can you explain it further, this resolution block grant?
Community Development Block Grant is an entitlement grant that the county gets each year based on population. And this year is 237,000, and all activities have to either benefit low-income individuals or a son of light activity. So there's some paving of low-income streets, there's demolitions of vacant lighted buildings, and some housing rehab countywide.
So this is for this year? This has happened last year?
This is 2015 money that the state has just released the application for, so we're actually a year behind. We'll be getting it sometime next year, before 2015.
And then, did you get a grant last year also?
Yeah, 2014, just came in recently.
About the same amount?
About the same amount.
Thank you.
Could the chair or whoever please explain what a low-income street is?
The streets have to be surveyed to determine if more than 51% of the residents are low-income, so door-to-door surveys are done by the municipality or our office to determine how many low-income residents are on there. As long as more than 51% are on, it would qualify for this funding.
I sure don't get it. I thought the townships and the county paved the streets.
They can apply for this funding as long as the benefit is to low-income residents.
The county doesn't, the county doesn't pave any streets, it's the townships and municipalities that do. And basically what happens on this money is the housing authority sends out information to all the municipalities and townships and says, do you have any projects that you would like us to look at to try and use as funding that becomes available? And that is the townships and municipalities send information back to the housing authorities and says, you know, we'd like to get this street paved if it qualifies, and we'd like to get this home taken down if it qualifies.
And based on whether that municipality is in a 51% poverty level or low-income level, they get the street paved. The people in the 50th percentile get zero. That sounds accurate.
And then...
If you make under, make under $15,000 a year, you don't pay any taxes. If you make over $25,000 a year, you pay a lot of taxes.
Welcome to Alabama.
And then what about last year? Was anybody, did anybody apply from the townships for the street work or home demolition? End of that funding?
Yes, about the same type of projects were done last...
Can you say, can you mention any streets? What streets were improved because of low-income residents?
This year it's High and Vine Street in the borough of Susquehanna.
High and what's the other?
Vine, sorry.
Oh, Vine.
So there's literally a survey. People go out and survey, or you look at, I guess, the tax rolls and find out how many people are at low income. And those neighborhoods are entitled to have the street paved.
But that would be just in the, in a borough. What about out in the townships? Any townships?
Same thing, if there was a particular road needing assistance, we would have to survey that whole town.
And did anybody apply last year that qualified?
Nothing, no street and roads in townships. It was in the boroughs. And all the municipalities get the notice of this. I'm sure it was that, like Peck Hill and Millford? Correct, yes, Peck Hill and Millford was last year's.
Peck Hill and Millford, was that in the borough or in the township?
Yeah, Millford Borough.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay. This time we'll do a public comment before we go back to the last item.
Why don't we do the last item, first case of public comment on what we did, right?
Let's go back to item 20. Item 20.
Here's what I think. I want to verify these numbers, and when I read the motion, I say, I'll make a motion to assist the area agency on aging with paying for services for Susquehanna County elderly residents. I want these to be able to verify that they're, this is only for Susquehanna County. Seems like a lot of money for just a county, but just to be sure it is, upon determination of the legally acceptable protocol to accomplish the same.
I'll second that.
I just want to reimburse upon State Budget Provo.
I'll second that.
I think that gets us where we need to be.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Are there any other questions? And hopefully the people in Harrisburg will finally wake up and do their jobs and will have a budget before we need to face September, October, November.
Yeah, good luck with that, not waking up and doing their jobs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, we'll go to public comment now. Yeah?
Can you give us an update on how the roads and the bridges are doing and what's the latest? Because I see also other companies working on the roads and do they have enough funding yet, our county?
Definitely not enough funding, definitely not enough money being put into the system to allow for the repairs that should be getting done. Right now, they're in the process of doing 29 from the golf course down to Franklin Forks. Then the last road they have to pave this year is 171 going out of Thompson North. There's a section there that's supposed to get done. I'm still trying to find out if that's getting done. The dilemma that we're running into is I have had a meeting scheduled next week with the Northern Tier Transportation Committee, which Penda, of course, sits on, and they are unable to come to the meeting because with no budget, the governor won't let them travel. So again, we're, you know, it's bad enough they're not passing the budget and getting the services done, but now they won't even hold their obligations to attend the meetings and do their jobs that way. So we're going to continue to meet with them. We have another meeting scheduled November 6th. I don't even know if that one's going to be done. It'll depend on whether they have a budget in place and if they can pay for their travel or not. So we'll have to find out about that one. And then the push will continue to be more road improvements, but also to find out why Suscan County is not getting the type of road repairs done that other counties are getting. Most places you go to, they just don't keep throwing more blacktop on and blacktop. They take and mill it down, you know, eight, 10 inches and get back to a good solid base and then put the blacktop back in, and then the roads last a lot longer.
For instance, if you look at Six and Eleven down there by Keystone College and going into the summit, have you seen how much blacktop they're putting on and the job they did there? There's quite a difference. Why can't they just, why can't you set up some sort of a webinar with these people? It's possible it's cheap enough. And then you don't have to travel, they don't have to travel. And you still can accomplish a meeting.
And that's been suggested, and we're waiting for an answer back from them on that. Again, it's government that has the best. The higher up it goes, the worse it gets.
So you haven't, you haven't been able to find out why we're not getting as much funds or our roads are not as good at this point?
Well, what they're saying is, you know, their claim to fame is, is that there's this magic formula that they use in Harrisburg as to how the funds are driven out and distributed, and it's based on population. And because of our population, what it is, you know, we get the funding that's adequate for our area based on our population. My argument to them is, is, well, you may be doing it on based on population, but the road conditions and the climate has a lot to do on how the roads last and how they stand up. They've neglected these roads for the last 20 to 30 years and have done nothing to improve the roads. And when you go down south and you go to Carlisle, Biglerville, I was there this weekend, their secondary roads are better than our primary roads. There's no, there's no patches in them, there's no big bumps in them. They're all taken care of. And it's because they don't have the weather conditions that we have, they don't get the constant frost and thaw, we get up here. But they should be calculating that into their funding stream, saying the roads up north will last a lot less than the roads in the south, so we need to have some adequate funding to maintain the roads in the north.
And what about factoring in that we're fracking, gas fracking county, and we have thousands of industry trucks that are pounding these roads, which the southern part of Pennsylvania does not have?
Well, and, you know, that is, of course, an argument that you could place, but the other thing that they do have in that area down there is they do have a lot of, a lot more truck traffic in that area other than water trucks. So their truck traffic, especially in the apple orchards, tractor trailers, you know, Mott's factory down there and a few of the other ones, the tractor trailers, it's unbelievable the amount of truck traffic they have. But their roads stand up to us. So that tells me that apparently their roads got built correctly when our roads didn't.
Now, what about 167 South? How do you feel the new roads been built according to your...
Well, 167 South is still a huge problem. I mean, it's nice to put lipstick on a pig and make it look, the road look nice, but I think it was two weeks ago, Mr. Viad lost a $200,000 truck on that road. The white line is in the ditch, and when the truck had to move over because of a vehicle coming the other way and got on the edge of the road, it sucked him right down in the ditch and totaled the truck.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh.
So when the ditches are right on the white line, that's a huge problem. And, you know, luckily, it was a truck, and the driver didn't get hurt, but if it had been a car that went off in that ditch and then hit the drain culvert, probably something could have been killed in it. You know, it's a four to five-foot drop.
So they didn't fill in the ditches? Are they supposed to fill them in?
No, 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 they're, they're for drainage. So, but if you're going to do that, then you need to have guardrails, so people can, you know, I mean, especially in the winter time, you know, the snow builds up high enough in the winter time, and that ditch has got filled with snow, it's going to look like everything's good. Somebody goes off the edge of the road thinking it's all snow and everything's fine, they're going to go right down in the ditch and be buried in the snow till spring.
Now, can he sue the state for the damages? Do you think so?
They can sue kind of.
And, okay, thank you. And then also, I was wondering, how's the water line to the jail coming along?
Actually, we're getting some good progress. If you remember, months ago, the county said that they would ante up $750,000 to try and get this thing moving. We now have got some confirmation back that the water company themselves is going to put over $300,000 into the project, and also that it looks like we will be able to secure some funding out of Harrisburg, over, around $300,000, and a couple other investors for $200,000, $300,000 more, so our portion will be significantly lower than what we anticipated. So we're hoping to have everything all worked out by the end of this year, and go to permits over the winter time, because as usual, we'll have to go to Penda to get permits, and that takes forever with them. So we hope that by spring, if we can get all these permits in place, then we should be able to get this water line in. And then with that, of course, we're now looking at one section of land down there, where someone is looking to invest and put a $7 to $9 million operation in, and then there's another 50-acre piece down there that another company's looking at to take and come into the area and possibly put jobs in there.
And that's all near the Bendix Superfund site?
No, we're staying away from that now. The college at one time was interested in going there, but was interested, and now everybody's backed away from it, so...
Did they give a reason?
They just couldn't come to an agreement between all the attorneys.
Now, the other companies that are coming in there, do they have to stay a certain distance from the superfund area?
Well, they'll be out of the superfund area.
And do you know what that distance is?
I have no idea what that is.
And then, do you know if that superfund site has been totally resolved, completed, cleaned up to the standards of the EPA?
I don't think there's ever a superfund site that ever gets off the superfund site, especially when there is no money in the superfund at all. It's another great government program that's, you know, was established, mandated, and then all of a sudden, there's no revenue or funds to support it. So the company that owns the property continues to work to remediate the problem, and from the testings that they've been telling us, that, you know, it is much better, it's not, you know, you still can't punch a hole in the ground down here and drink the water, but, you know, as far as the other hazards, they've gotten much better.
And then I heard maybe the Montrose Borough is opposing the water line, is that, is that true?
Those work to do what they need to do with the water company owns the water lines.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, this time the riches is supposed to be...